That's right. See? Okay. Today is Tuesday, February 28th, 2023. I call the Village Board we need order. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Frankie?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Prochnow?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Present.
We do have all board members present tonight. Now I'll explain why I'm saying that with five here in a few minutes. Until then, if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We do not have an invocation tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Johnny, you're gonna like this. Craig, Craig Jr., his oldest boy, he's in club wrestling now. Was at Regionals. Lost his first match. He pinned every guy after that to get third place. Thought you'd like that. So. Huh? Uh, he's going to sectional now. So, but I thought you'd get a kick out of that. It came through. Okay. Uh, we need approval of minutes of February 14th, um, 2023.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting held on February 14th, 2023 as submitted and dispensed with the reading.
We need a new, we need a new personnel.
Second. Sammy, Sammy already asked.
Who wants it?
I said second.
Oh, so you're gonna have it now?
No, I'm doing it right now, no.
We gotta get the resolve. Okay. We have a motion by trustee Listner, sent by trustee Frankie. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show it has approval. Mayor and Board of Trustees report, we do have some big announcements tonight. First off, on February 16th, we did have a tobacco hearing with Love to Smoke located at 62 Beast Field Road. We took actually unprecedented step by the Board, or I did as the Smoking Commissioner. First time I've been mayor in 26 years I've ever done as mayor, and we think, when Mr. Knickerbocker was here saying, we think it's the longest suspension we've ever done. Uh, we suspended license for 30 days. We have found that they were not only doing tobacco products, also selling, is it TCH or THC? THC. THC products to kids as young as 12. And then those kids were taking Grove Junior High, selling them to kids there that were getting sick. Police called in, fire department called in. So, um, that was not good. And we actually have another place that we'll be having here, and they failed for a second time too. So, we've directed attorney, um, I should say, this is not Mr. Knickerbocker, he did not get drastically better looking. This is Mr. Don Storino, uh, we're welcoming tonight. But Mr. Knickerbocker's been advised, and he's working on a 30-day notice to get us information how we can address this stuff being sold. It shouldn't be sold. And dispensaries fine should not be sold at these shops. So, we're gonna be working on it, give me here a lot more about there very soon. Also, on February 23rd, our new Congresswoman, Congresswoman Ramirez came to visit us. She represents the 3rd District, which is the industrial park, oldest section of our housing. Uh, spent the day with us, had a great introduction. Uh, we're gonna work on a lot of things together, and I'm looking forward to a long partnership with her, as we do with Congressman Raja, who represents a lot of the western side of the village and the residential area. Big announcement coming up, first one, is on June 4th, Elk Grove Village will be celebrating, I don't know if you want to celebrate it, but have an event for our 5th anniversary of the Elk Grove Cares Program. One thing's gonna happen that day is we're going to roll out an expansion of the program. I won't say yet what it is, we're still finalizing some details, but the program's done so well, we're helping a lot of people, making changes in lives, that we're gonna expand it in areas to help out even more people. So, we're looking forward to that day to roll that out to the community. But, we're also gonna bring the community together that day for a special event day, uh, to talk about cares, let know we're helping save people from the disease of addiction, again, the disease of addiction. And what we're gonna do is something different that we haven't done before. From 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., we're gonna have an auto show over in the partisan parking lot, the one closest to the homes, is that Yarmouth Court there? I think that's Yarmouth Court there. We're gonna have a, in that parking lot that backs up there, same location where the Blackhawks bring the Stanley Cup Trophy that one time in 2015. So, we're having an auto show over there. We're gonna have Tony Ocean providing live music during the show. The show run from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. So, Tony Ocean's gonna provide music, especially for the genre of the cars, that's usually an auto show, and we're looking forward to a great time there. Then, from 5:00 till 8:00, we're gonna have food trucks lined up along the entry drive into the library, backing up toward the library facing toward the Village Green. We have a number of food trucks there. We're gonna have picnic tables set up along the parking area there, because people'll enjoy that, because at 6:00, we're gonna have a special concert that night. No, it's not, not the one where I was open, but, you never know. But, that night, we're gonna have the grassroots, coming to play concert for us at 6:00 p.m. So, there's gonna be a complete night of bringing the community together, celebrating our battle against the disease of addiction, renounce the expansion of that program, and we're gonna bring awareness to what we're doing to keep it going and helping people. With all this fentanyl coming, I just read today, in California, they seized enough fentanyl in one bus to kill 50 million people. One bus, 50 million people. It's more than the state of California, they're like twice the size of California. It's unbelievable. So, addictions out there, whether it's drugs, alcohol, we're there to help. Please, we're there to help. So, we're gonna have a big event to showcase where we're at on 5th anniversary, and then talk about the expansion of the Elk Grove Cares Program. We're excited about it. Secondly, um, we've talked about it before, but ahead of, talk again about it, our good friends, our favorite suburb to the west, Schaumburg. Once again, I give Mayor Daley a thank you for thinking about Elk Grove. It says here in the article back on, uh, February 22nd, uh, Schaumburg officials rethinking plan to mail $150 checks to every occupied household. They now decide to do gift cards. Sound familiar? Sound familiar? After weighing the pros and cons of both options, checks or gift cards, Schaumburg staff and elected officials found themselves persuaded by the Elk Grove Village counterparts who endorsed a vendor who issued $200 gift card, Schaumburg 150, Elk Grove 200, just saying, um, to all 14,000 households in our community last year. Schaumburg Mayor Tom Daley received similar assurance from Elk Grove Village Mayor Craig Johnson. He has convinced me the issuing cards would be a better way, Daley told Schaumburg trustees. So, one, we thank, uh, one, Schaumburg thanked him for doing a rebate back to its residents. Two, we thank him for lead, following our lead on something like this. And, uh, three, we thank him for the praise for what we did. It's very nice. And, um, like I say, Schaumburg's a great community, Mayor Daley's doing a phenomenal job, his trustees, and, um, it's good for the people of Schaumburg to be getting this extra benefit back to them. So, we thank them for recognizing us and everything we did. Next, on Ash Wednesday, which was the 22nd, I believe, right? Um, I give Father Dan of Queen of the Rosary Church and, um, the other one, um, St. Julian. I give him credit, I don't know if anyone saw, it was on the news, it was in all the newspapers. He did something unique. Father's talked to me before, how he can reach out to our business community, our business park, remember the biggest business park in North America, how he can reach out to, you know, show some faith, some help, guidance for people there. So, what he did was, at Tasty Catering, our favorite caterers here in Elk Grove, allowed him, on Ash Wednesday, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., to have a drive-by service. You can drive by for a blessing and your ashes on Ash Wednesday. And, to the credit, I think it was ABC News came out, I know the Herald, and I think the Tribune got pictures of it. So, I give Father Dan credit, like we brag about how we think outside the box, I give Father credit for thinking outside the box and doing something different and getting the word out, so.
It was raining that day.
It was pouring that day.
I was in that line, even though I'm not Catholic, I still got my ashes, and it was amazing to turn out, so I applaud them.
Yes, he did great, and it's funny, 'cause it came up to me, I think it was gonna wash off my head as fast as him crossing it. So, but I do give Father Dan credit, thinking outside the box, spreading the word, nothing wrong with that, and, uh, it's nice he got a nice coverage out of it.
Yeah.
So, good thinking, and we commend him. And Father Dan does our invocations, you've probably met him here before, and he'll do more in the future. Next thing, the car show. As everyone remembers, the Makers Wanted car was at the Chicago Auto Show. It was there on Monday, which was Family Day. Uh, that was the day they expected about 38,000 people, I think, going to the show, and knowing how, well, it turned out, we gave away over 3,000 token items promoting the Makers Wanted, over 3,000. We ran out early. Um, we actually had a line almost the entire time that we had stuff. Caroline Maggie did a great job down there, right? We had a line the whole time. I don't think we ever didn't have a line, so unfortunately we ran out. It went very well, and really gave it a great chance to, uh, showcase Elk Grove, the Makers Wanted and all that. That car is like a giant magnet. It attracts people unbelievably. Matter of fact, let me show you how it attracts people. Caroline?
Well, we're here today at the Chicago Auto Show 2023, and what a better place to roll out the Makers Wanted race car for this summer Chicago race. Brad Kozlowski, our driver, one of the best out there, joining with the best business park to make a winning combination. So, here in Elk Grove, we're proud to party with Brad Kozlowski and the Makers Wanted theme to showcase what's the best in Elk Grove, the best in racing, and we're number one in the world.
So, the entire day, people were just lined up to come see the car, take pictures with it, and went very well. Matter of fact, the nice thing is Brad Kozlowski, our driver, was leading the Daytona 500 for, he had the most laps leading for the entire race, won the first stage, was in the lead with four laps to go, and some issues, crashes, all that, so, you know, we do have a great driver, actually didn't do too bad last weekend either, and the Fontana race in California. Weird seeing snow in the background, but he did a good job, so. Excuse me. We are gonna make sure we keep getting the word out and show you how popular we are. When we did this race, or this car at the, uh, at the show, two things were supposed to happen. One, we were splitting the cost to be there with, uh, Chicago Northwest, $500 from us, $500 from them. They waived our $500, and we were supposed to pay up to $2,000, get in the car, maneuvered and set up at the auto show. The auto show was very grateful for the car there, obviously knew it was a big attraction, they waived their fee. So, outside our staff, getting the car there and back, and, um, our young ladies working there at the show, it cost the village nothing to showcase in front of that many people. So, we're excited about it, it went well, and we're, um, looking forward to having that car out around the village a lot this coming summer. Excuse me. Excuse me. Okay, thank you. So, expect to see the Makers Wanted car all over the village and neighboring towns this summer, so we're gonna keep doing that. Next thing, hang on a second, excuse me. Fact or fiction? If you follow the Village website, we're now gonna stay updated, better job, keep them , we will inform on Facebook, a fact versus fiction. Um, as we talked about before, and I've mentioned many times, excuse me, we're tired of people out there just scaring Elk Grove residents, out and out lying, and more importantly, attacking our staff. Village staff does a phenomenal job, from our police, fire, public works, administration, everywhere. And we're not gonna sit by, as I said before. Matter of fact, we're very familiar with the guy, um, Mr. Jeff Snyder, once again, um, my opinion, town clown, um, writes, "Now Elk Grove Village withholding information about dead bodies found in Elk Grove Village." It's very sad that Elk Grove withholding information from its residents. Well, first off, there's not dead bodies throughout Elk Grove Village. An issue happened over by the Home Depot parking lot, person was found in an RV, our police were right on it, we know what happened. Our respect for the family, next of kin, we're not divulging what occurred. No one's at risk. If anyone's ever at risk, we would notify immediately. But again, to say that the village has dead bodies hiding from people, that's not a lie. It's wrong. And that's the kind of garbage shouldn't be going on, and that does nothing but hurt good staff members and this community. It's not right. I mean, you know, like yesterday, an event, someone broke into our, did a robbery at a Walgreens in Schaumburg, they did it, the same person came to Elk Grove, did the same thing. We, we immediately check it, if there's anything to put out to protect people, we would immediately, but we also gotta do our job to catch the perpetrator, and we're gonna do that. But not, we don't withhold information to put anybody at risk, that would not happen. The first is when someone's found dead, out of courtesy and respect, we notify the next of kin immediately. It was not a murder, it was not anything of that nature, no one's at risk, we knew that almost instantaneously. So, for people to say stuff like that, that's wrong, and we're gonna keep calling them out on that. I have no problem doing that. And, and maybe he'll finally wake up and realize you gotta talk to him about the truth here. Next items, um, there's laws being proposed in Springfield, I think in Chicago, other areas, that we're gonna be following very closely, and I know another people have approached me and maybe other elected officials about. For example, there's one law down in Springfield, introduced in the House, I think being prepared to introduce in the Senate, and that law would make all bathrooms gender neutral. In other words, if you have a bathroom with four or five stalls, like here in Elk Grove, we have one that's for men, we have one that's for women, well, there's a law being proposed, that would make one bathroom for everyone. Well, we've talked a little bit, that's not something we believe in. I have no problem with them putting up private individual bathrooms, whoever wants to go in there, man, woman, LGBTQ, transgender, whatever, that's fine, it's self for them to use. But if they have a one bathroom with multiple stalls or urinals that both men and women go in together with, this Board feels is not right. So, we're gonna be looking at some options for us, and we're gonna be studying into that, and look at it. Another law that's being proposed, I think at this time just for Chicago, not sure it's gonna be spread out, is they wanna require gas stations, banks, and stores to hire their own armed security. Well, here in Elk Grove, we have the finest police department bar none. We rely on them to protect this community, and they do a phenomenal job. So, we're not gonna be looking to do anything near like that. That's why we have police, that's why we have great police, and that's how we know it's taken care of right. So, I'm not sure what's going on, we can't get an answer, but we will address them if they affect Elk Grove, just so you can be assured of that. I know I had several seniors approach me at the fitness center over the past couple days about this, and I could tell them, we'll look into it, and we'll make sure we address it properly. I'm a grandfather, I wouldn't feel comfortable in some of those situations with bathrooms with my grandkids. So, it's something I think a lot of people feel, that way we're gonna do it. So, we'll keep you updated as this thing moves along further. The last item tonight, um, and you notice we have an open seat here tonight. Trustee Pat Feiter, who's been a board member for 26 and a half years, one of the longest serving ones we've had, uh, before that, he was a seven-year plant commission member here in Elk Grove, um, has notified myself and the Board that he's resigning effective immediately from the Village Board. Pat has done a phenomenal job for this community, um, very helpful in many ways and different areas he would address. He's our liaison for Bulgaria, our sister city there, Pernik, um, he was involved in the, uh, North Chicago Northwest, our tourism consortium. He was a head of our recycling waste committee for many years, and many other ways involved. He's very instrumental in a lot of ways for Elk Grove, and did a great job, and we all relied on him for advice and counsel. You know, he was a former teacher at Main South High School, and one of his areas he was always proud of was he had put together a school team for, um, the Constitution, it was called, what was it? We the People. Uh, it was actually a forum with different schools that compete, talking about constitutional issues. Matter of fact, Mr. Knickerbocker and I, was a judge at some of those forums over the years, and Pat was phenomenal at that, so he knew government inside and out was very good at. So, but Pat has said that, um, one, his wife Anne, for a number of years, has been more and more anxious to move to Florida to settle down and enjoy the retirement years, and Pat has had some health issues, and so now is the right time for him to, uh, move to Florida, him and Anne, and to, um, you know, address some issues, and, um, he's perfectly happy, he's content, and, um, he's gonna miss us, he said, no question about it. He liked working with the Board, and more importantly, he liked working for this community, and I said he did a phenomenal job for us. So, we're gonna miss Pat, um, and we thank him for his time and dedication to this community. That's a lot of years to take away from your family to give to Elk Grove. Think about between the two, 33 and a half years. And, um, so, we thank Pat again, we're gonna miss him, and, uh, we wish him nothing but the West, uh, the best, and, um, and hope he enjoys his time in Florida, and who knows? He may even get involved down there, you never know. So, we thank you, Pat, for all you've done for Elk Grove, and you're gonna be missed, and we wish you nothing but the best. So, we have an opening. Uh, how that works is, um, I have a period of time where I would make a nomination to the Board and ask for their advice and consent on that choice, so that'll be coming up over the next time. Kind of what happened with Nancy Zornik and trustee Miller. Nancy stepped down, trustee was brought to the Board, the Board voted to approve her in. And so, what happened is like trustee Miller's running for reelection now, or for election now. Whoever fills Pat's seat would be two years away, 'cause it's so close to the next election. So, that'd be the election of April of 25, whoever we appoint would be up for election that time. So, that's how that would work. So, again, we thank Pat, and, um, we'll move on from that point on. That concludes the Mayor's Report. Not bad, trustee Frankie?
It was good.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, and because you're so kind and nice, we'll start with trustee Schmidt.
Yes, um, I just want to report that, uh, I attended the Jawa meeting last week where we passed a budget for the Joint Water Action Agency for, for Elk Grove and six other communities. It was a $63 million budget that was passed for the upcoming year. Things are running well with the water, and Elk Grove still is the second largest usual water of the consortium. We, we run about 4 million gallons a day, so happy to say things are going well with our water system. And I'd just like to say that I enjoyed working with Pat Feiter for many years as a chief of police, uh, when he was, when I was chief and he was on the Board, we worked on several projects together, and, uh, he helped us start our, our Italian Sister Cities program, and, uh, you know, as a board member, I also enjoyed working with him on several things, and my wife Cindy and I wish he and Anne the best in, uh, his retirement. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Prochnow.
Thank you. Well, we had another winter snowfall, and I'm happy to report we did a much better job with our snow removal. A lot of the sidewalks were shoveled, a few were not, but, um, winter's not over yet, so please keep in mind that if it does snow and you have the ability and the time, please go out there and shovel your sidewalks and driveways, and if you have handicapped neighbors or elderly neighbors, please try and help them out and get their sidewalk shoveled too, so we can all, those walkers, those dog walkers, that we could all be a lot safer out there. Also a reminder that we still have the Winter's Farmers Market going on, and it will be this Saturday, March 4th, um, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Christus Victor Church on Arlington Heights Road across from the movie theater. Uh, there's a variety of, of homegrown produce and baked goods and just meats, eggs, cheeses, dog treats, and that's just a few of the things that are available. So, try and check out the Farmers Market this Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I also would like to congratulate Pat Feiter on his retirement from the Village Board. I know this was a very difficult decision to make, but I'm happy for you and Anne. Thank you for your years of service, your knowledge and love of government inspired all of us to be better as trustees. You are a true mentor, and I will miss seeing you, but I'm happy to know that our friendship will continue from years, for years to come. Thank you and goodbye. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Listner.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Before I get to Pat, I want to let you, let the Board know, I attended the Dare graduation at Stevenson School on February 21st, and I just wanted to say these students were so well behaved, uh, when Officer Malek and Chief Walsh were speaking to them, they just paid close attention, and I just wanted to compliment their parents and the teachers and principal for, uh, putting together such a great class. Also, Mr. Mayor, as I was there, I was looking around the gym, uh, and I noticed a, uh, they have a mascot. And I know you keep asking, uh, our attorney, well, not this one, but the other one, about the mascot. Do you know the mascot for Stevenson? Well, if you don't, I understand.
No, I don't.
Oh, okay. That concludes that report.
Are you not gonna tell us what it is?
No, it's the, uh, the Stallions.
The Stallions. I know what I was thinking, raccoons. Is that another school?
Well, uh, Cougars at QR, and, uh, Lyle the Lion at, uh, Link, and you must know Grove, 'cause you went there.
The Elk.
The Elks, right.
Okay.
Anyway, I was hoping George would have been here for that, so.
He would never, he would never got it.
I also want to wish trustee Feiter, uh, since he resigned, the best of luck. I did send him an email and expressed my feelings, and as the Mayor was talking about Bulgaria, and trustee Schmidt mentioned Sicily, he, he was involved in a lot of things overseas. When I first spoke with Pat, I think I'm getting this right, but I think I had a call him in Bosnia, and there was some real problems going over there. I think there was a lot of battles going over in that part of the world at that time. Uh, Pat was just being, uh, he was, uh, being recommended by the Mayor, uh, previous to Mayor Johnson, well, Mayor Gallatano, and, uh, so we had to speak to him, 'cause the decision was coming up pretty quick, and, uh, it was sort of difficult, but, uh, Pat expressed himself excellent at the time, and I was glad to, uh, support him, and he'll be missed, and, uh, as everyone said, the best of everything to, uh, him and his wife Anne, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Miller.
Thank you. So, the Community Character Coalition gives three $2,000 scholarships to seniors of, um, the area high schools if you are an Elk Grove resident. So, I encourage Elk Grove seniors to please look, um, either on the CCCEG.org website or, um, please contact your school counselor at your high school. Uh, the deadline to apply for these scholarships is April 11th. Personally, I knew Pat and Anne when they lived in our neighborhood, and I would see them walking their dog and/or riding their bike, and we used to, um, stop and talk all the time, and I will miss seeing that. I want to thank Pat for his years of service, um, his dedication to the CCC and recycling. I think he did a great job with, um, all of the committees he was on, and Pat and Anne, my best wishes to you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Now trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Is that the five to one thing now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, Storino liked that, that was good, he said.
That was pretty good, huh? Uh, I do want to wish Pat a long and healthy retirement. I think he deserves the time to enjoy having, not having to worry about doing all this stuff, and I know he took everything to heart, so, um, enjoy your retirement, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, we move on now to accounts payable warrants for February 28th, 2023.
I move approval of the February 28th, 2023 accounts payable warrant in the amount of $296,782.04.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by trustee Listner, sent by trustee Miller. Jen, call the roll, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Motion passes five to nothing. We run out to the accounts, or the consent agenda, and tonight, Mr. Storino, we have eight as in?
You have to say something.
Apple? Apple. An attorney. An attorney. He goes at through J as in... James.
Good said, Jeff.
I'm supposed to say Jeff. No, no, we don't say Jeff, no. A goes more toward that, but that's a different, that's a different thing. Anyways, so we have a consent agenda items. Jeff knows I love him. Consent agenda items A through J. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, a second by trustee Listner. Any staff or elected officials, questions, comments, corrections on the agenda? Anybody in the audience here for the agenda? Seeing none and hearing none, we record the vote as previously demonstrated, five to nothing. There's no items, regular agenda? No plan commission, just zoning board, Mr. Roan?
No plan commission, one item under the zoning board of appeals. On February 16th, the zoning board of appeals met here at ZBA docket 23-1. Petitioners seeking a variation to the zoning ordinance to allow for variance to permit a six-foot-high fence between the front edge of the house and the rear edge of the house, which will extend approximately five feet beyond the nearest front corner of the principal structure on the adjacent single-family residential lot to the south at 102 Ridgewood, Ridgewood Road. It was the consensus of the zoning board of appeals by a 7-0 vote to do grant the request of variation.
Now, petitioners here, you're good, sir. I know we have the rookie member of the zoning board in the back that made his first vote. With that said, does trustees have any questions, comments?
No.
Okay. I need a motion to direct the attorney, prepare necessary documents for next board meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Listner. Second by trustee Miller. All in favor, signature five, I say an aye. Aye. Opposed, I'd direct them to show an answer. Sir, you're all approved. You're good to go. You do not need to come back to the next meeting. It's a mere formality. So you can start, well, the weather's bad, but you can start whenever you want to. Just work with the engineering department, get the permit. We thank you for working with the village, working with staff and the zoning board. And we appreciate you investing back in the village. So thank you very much. You're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Also.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate greatly by reducing the speed limit on Oakton Street.
You like that, don't you, 25?
Very great.
I talked, I talked to a lot of your neighbors on Saturday. I was walking the street. And that's something that was brought by your neighbors at the corner of Arlington Heights Road and Oakton on each end. Yeah, they were, they're going, my, the cars and all that. So I worked with staff and I know police department. I said, I drove around every school in Elk Grove. The only school by its front door that had speed limit above $25 an hour was roughly. All the rest of schools were 25. I said, the world's not all wrong, and that's all right. So we did fix it and good night. So we had a speed camera, a speed truck out there this weekend.
Every morning.
So we're going to keep it up. And thank you, though, I appreciate it.
I love it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
No problem. Have a good night, sir.
Good night.
Thank you. Yeah, remember, we made that change. Made a big difference. People were thanking me up and down that street the whole time. They were saying, thank you. It's slower, it's amazing what five miles can do with people driving, especially by a school. So we did the right thing.
Now, is that sign going to stay up though? Because I drive it every day too. But the visuals, I see that sign flashing. It's like, oh, that's right.
I think it's just now to keep reminding people. They put them up for a period of time, then take it down. We did it over on Tani recently. And now Tani, we found a lot of speakers. So we're going to be cracking down a little bit on that one. But that too, I was there on that street. And a guy on the 700 number, he said, mayor, they're going. I said, no problem. So we got a camera up, the police department did a great job. We got the numbers in. First, it's a lot of traffic in that street. And secondly, a lot going 15 to 20 over. So you figure that's going 45 to 50 on that street. That's fast. So we'll do it, and hopefully we're keeping them good on Oakton now with the new speed limit. So that's good. Thank you. Okay, nothing else, Mr. Roan?
Nope.
Okay. Recycling and Waste Committee, our acting chairman, Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
Wow. Keep recycling.
How are the Christmas lights doing?
Ah, yes.
How many times have you collected so far? Pat always updates us. How many times have you collected?
Okay, on the spot. All right, you can turn, you can turn in your old Christmas lights, I think, still, right? Okay, got that right. So just bring in the village hall, make sure they're unplugged. Okay?
Make sure they're unplugged.
And then...
And we announced our recycling bins this summer. I'm sure you want to update.
Yeah, they're coming up. We're going to be recycling paper and electronics. Check the village website because we always update it all the time. So that and don't put stuff in a recycling bin you're not supposed to, right? Your garbage or plastic bags. Keep everything empty. And the grass, and that starts April 1st, correct? See, I didn't even study.
You're just a natural, Jeff.
And more importantly, Pat's mentioned, I think, last three meetings. How many times have we recycled, we do last year in 2022?
A lot.
Okay.
Okay, next time, I'll know more.
Always having fun with trustee Frankie, we all know that. Okay, we move on now to Judiciary Plan and Zoning Committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Wow. Capital Intelligence Committee, trustee Listner.
No report.
Well, I told you eight o'clock, so I'm not going to be a liar. Hey, Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
That at least knows something about it. It's that time for the scholarships again. I thought we had more scholarship talk today. You forgot to do your job. And I'm supposed to do it on the whim, so. We've got seven $1,000 scholarships available. Go to the councilor's offices at Conit or Elk Grove High School of St. Viter. They have the forms or go to the village website. Get them in by May 5th. Something else going on in May, something about that. Oh, Sinking the Mile, wasn't it?
There's a coffee.
There you go, and a coffee. So get them in. Do not be late. We had some people that got them in too late last year, so they weren't counted. But it's seven $1,000 scholarships. So then I'll be talking about it until May, so.
Wait a minute, May 5th is a Saturday?
Friday.
Yeah, it's a Friday.
Who said Saturday?
May 6th is the coffee.
Yeah, because as I say, August 5th is kind of going for vacation times. August 5th is a coffee. That's on, how can May also have a 5th?
Six, yeah, sorry.
Thank you. No, just checking, just call me, call, actually, I was paying attention.
Thanks, now I'm going to pay for that.
Look, I paid attention.
Very good.
Thank you. We move on to Information Committee, trustee Miller.
So I'll make this quick. In the newsletter is not only the recycling events and the dates, but also we have actually put out a survey for responses for the ADA, which is the American Disabilities Act. And so if you have noticed something that you want to respond to that affects you, those responses are due by March 10th. The Public Works Citizen Academy applications are due April 12th. And the academy actually starts April 19th, am I correct? And you're also hiring for summer seasonal help? Is there a deadline to apply?
We're not getting that many applicants, so we're going to keep extending it until we get more applicants.
If you're looking for some seasonal work, some summer seasonal work, please check the website and apply accordingly. So that concludes my report.
And what's, Kobe, what's starting to pay for that? It's like $14?
Yeah, I don't remember, 14, 25?
Yeah, and then 15, 25, second year and something like that. So we've got, you know, when I was a kid in the village, I got a job at the park district, maintenance. But I tried the village. It was impossible to get positions at the village. Those things gobbled up boys like that. It's amazing nowadays, we can't get enough kids.
Right, and this year, we're even willing to work with people on their hours. Like if somebody only wants to work Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or whatever, we're willing to work with them on that. So we're trying something new to attract more people.
It's a different world. It's a different world.
Sure is.
Okay, we move on now to Business Leaders Forum, trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Prochnow.
Just a reminder that the next blood drive will be Saturday, April 8th.
Okay, and we move on now to Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
No update on airports, still waiting to hear back from the FAA on things we're working on fly quiet. Parade Committee, our next meeting is Monday, March, this coming Monday. That would be 6th?
Yes.
Monday, the 6th. So at 6:00 p.m. up in the Churnet Conference Room. Hard to believe in six months to be the parade already. So doing that. Actually, that's right. We may have a new chairman coming.
Oh, yeah.
Right, okay.
There we go.
Okay. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, Mr. Strino. The only thing we require for a village attorney, that's how he only gets paid. If he doesn't do this, he doesn't get paid, is every board meeting, we go through the lineup for this summer's concerts. So since you're obviously filling in for Mr. Knickerbocker tonight, and obviously you want to get paid, which I don't blame you. I do. I can't wait to hear you read off the lineup for us so I can pay you. Otherwise, the taxpayers of Gold will be very happy. So our first concert's on July 4th.
When's Tony Ocean coming?
That's June 4th. That's June 4th.
Why, I hit the 4th right. I just hit the wrong month.
You know what? Rookies can make mistakes. It's okay. We'll still pay you. But I'll go through with you for once, okay?
Give it to me.
But the next time you're here.
I better commit it to memory.
You'll be ready.
I will.
Okay, we have our first concert on July 4th. June 4th is a special night with grassroots. And on July 4th this year, we're going to have KC and the Sunshine Band. Then our next concert's the 11th of July. It's Tuesday out here at the Town Center. That will be the Spinners. And then we have on the 20th, it's a Thursday tied to Rotary Fest. We're going to have a band that my kids are so excited about because finally it's one they know of and have heard of. And that will be All American Rejects. You and I both have no clue, but that's fine. Then on the 25th, out here again, Town Center, we will have the Oak Ridge Boys.
Well, I've heard of them.
Yeah.
Or the Old Brook Boys.
Trustee Frankie on Oak Brook Boys. And then the last concert, which will be August 1st, Tuesday out here at Town Center, will be Ann Wilson of Heart. So quite a lineup. It's probably our, it is our biggest lineup, I think, cost-wise we've ever had. And we're looking forward to a great summer coming up. And again, it's for the community to come together, relax, have fun, no fees. It's all free. And first for her, come for serve. And I'm sure we're going to do the countdown for the grassroots at 3:00, you know, before we open up those seats. So but again, Mr. Strino, if you're here in July, come by, enjoy one of the shows. And you're joined, I think, when we had the Beach Boys, we had the Beach Boys a couple of years ago. We had the largest crowd ever out there, 20,000 people.
It's the envy of all the communities.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And it's hard work of the, not only the board, but the staff and the community all come together to have a great time. So thank you. Appreciate it. We want now to report from our, well, wait, no items under Liquor Commission, Special Events, Memorial Day coming up on, what is it this year? It's not the 31st.
Oh, I don't have this specific.
29th. It'd be at the Pavilion Indoors, Rain or Shine, Hot or Cold. Set there. Now, report from village manager, Mr. Roan.
No report.
Oh, that was interesting. Thank you. And our report from our beloved acting village clerk, Jen. I know you got one.
Yes. Early voting will begin on March 20th through April 3rd at the village hall. The hours are Monday through Saturday, 9 to 5, and Sunday is 10 to 4.
Very good. So no excuse, I think last year there was a village election. 60% of the voters voted early and set election day. So it's slowly charting a change. And this right out here, so if you come parking a parking lot, you see signs, come on in. They do a great job. They got down to a science now. The same guys are there all the time, the girls. Ladies are there all the time. And they do a great job. So appreciate it. Okay, we'll look under Mr. Strino. Yep, there's no unfinished business under him, so it's all taken care of. And Mr. Knickerbocker, I checked my sheriff attorney out. New business items from board members. Seeing none? Now we go out to the public. Helen, how's things going?
Really good.
And look, see what happened? What we've done as a board, if you remember, for the longest time, Helen and her significant other would always be apart. Now, if you notice the last two meetings, they've been sitting next to each other. Am I right?
I'm glad they made up.
See? That's the power of love we have in this room. It just brings people together, and we're very excited about that. And he did a great job filling in for you at the coffee with the board. Yep, he did phenomenal. He took a lot of notes. He was all ready for you. So but we thank you for being here again tonight. And again, we have Scott here, and his daughter came. We appreciate showing up. He just enjoyed coming to the zoning board meeting so much, he wanted to come again. So he's just here enjoying. So thank you for being here. And of course, our favorite reporter, Tom Robb. Were you able to juggle between the two?
Yeah, I missed a little bit of the debate because you were, your presentation tonight was...
So I, I warrant more than the debate. He was, poor Tom, had a quandary because District 59 had the debate forum tonight online for the candidates there in our board meeting. And I obviously knew something was coming up, so I gave my heads up. And so I give you credit for being able to juggle.
I thought the police weren't going to let him in.
I did too. I saw him standing out there.
I thought, what's going on here?
I have faith in Tom. So I'm glad it worked out for you. Okay, nothing else? It's hard to believe it's already March coming.
Well, I thought you meant an early board meeting.
Oh, it's 10 to 8. I promised Mr. Strino 8:00, did I not?
You did.
And we always deliver in Elk Grove. And Mr. Strino, again, is filling in for Mr. Knickerbocker tonight. Mr. Knickerbocker's fine. George is fine. He's just out of town. So everything's good. But he did a great job. It's very enlightening to have you here.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
It was good to be here.
Very knowledgeable. Gave us a legal rendering before the meeting. I mean, I'm just not used to that stuff, so thank you. It's something new. So with that said, Jen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Listner.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Our board members, we have now five, have voted to adjourn, five to nothing. Georgie, we love you, don't worry. Meeting adjourned.